And the first item of business is adjustments to the agenda. And I will note that we're going to pull item 5B1 from the consent calendar. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda today? I will note, we do have an 11 o'clock time certain for one item. And we will have executive session today. Hopefully, we'll get to that this morning. No other adjustments to agenda, then we'll move on to public comments. I'll call you up to the podium here if you just state your name and where you're from for the record. And you'll have three minutes to address the board. The first person signed up is Con Magnuson. Followed by Laura Magnuson.
Good morning. My name is Con Magnuson. I'm hearing a problem of same thing dealing with the county. And this has to do with the fact that over the years, Lane County has stole better than two feet of my ground, or 250 feet, knowingly doing it and being told by the people that run the ditch crew, they can do what they did. They stole the fence. The crowning touch was when I was doing my subdivision, they dug out my survey stakes. And I've been trying to deal with Marcia Miller. She pawns me off down to Orin Schumacher, who has to go back there anyway, and keeps telling me, well, they can't do anything because they can't go in that ditch because it's a wetlands. Yet, they've been digging in that ditch for 25 years and keep encroaching on me. If you'd like to see documents, I have them here of the bill I have to pay, which I believe Lane County should pay. This is the bill. Underneath it is the map that shows the front of the road, a summer road, and the stake stayed on that cost me approximately close to $1,100. Can I give somebody a double? A single right here, please. Thanks. I realize this is probably redundant for you people. I've been here so much because I've had these problems with the county. It appears that when you deal, and I believe people, you should know that when you deal with some of these people, you go in there and they have the attitude, we got you. And you listen to them long enough, and they do. And I have not heard back on the tax deal yet. But I will say this about your tax assessor over the other problem I had. He told me he did not have to accept the land petition from 1980. He did not have to accept it, therefore, he did not have to give it a tax lot. And I didn't realize I had them, but I have their figures here. They showed all along that they had that in five acre tracts. And if you go by their analogy, that trailer house sitting there by the county, it's still under 2601. 2601 has another place on it. So when is this next up going to stop in the county? When are you going to be able to deal with county officials on a one-to-one basis where it's not told that you don't understand, you need legal advice, or you need to hire an outside planner to do your work for you? Can you answer that? I guess not.
I will respond to you, but not at this.
Okay, I agree. Granted, I understand that. It's just that, you don't understand, my wife and I are retired. I'm disabled. So is my wife. I've been disabled since 1990. This whole project of ours was to retire on. And I spent five years, five years fighting Lane County after you people, well, three of them sitting there helped me out, and they didn't listen. The last thing I had to fight, the surveyor. He didn't want to accept your order. Took me till two months ago. And then this is another, just another. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping, and my wife does, that maybe you people can handle this and understand what I'm not the only one, by the way. But I'm the only one that will voice it, and I'm paying for it. And I know I am. Other people, they're afraid to come in here and talk to you people. They're afraid to go talk to the planner. I can give you another one, just quick. My neighbor down the road built a house, goes to planning department. They tell him that his subject tank is illegal, never permitted. He has to pay $15,000 almost to get a system put in. I went down there because I knew the guy that owned it. All you gotta do is go on the computer, and it shows the tank was put in legal, the drain field was put in. So he's got two systems now. That's just one of many. And I thank you.
Thank you, Con. Laura, did you want to address this today? So we have Lonnie, and is it Douglas?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Gentlemen, my name is Lonnie Douglas. I'm a board member with ESSN, Eugene Springfield Solidarity Network. And I'm here today to bring to your attention, there was an article on Saturday in the Register Guard called "County Ponder's Property Control." And there were some things in the article that kind of concerned me. And I'll go with the quotes here. One of the quotes was that the county would explicitly, there's a measure to, I'm sorry, a measure to allow city officials to ban people or remove people from public property. And this measure would explicitly allow the county administrator or any other county employee designated by her or him to order people off county property or to ban them from it. Also says the ordinance would apply to all county buildings, county parks and roads, fairgrounds, and the Wayne Moore's Free Speech Plaza outside this very building. I guess Mr. Dingell, the attorney for the county, he described it to you all as a housekeeping thing. Concerns me because I understand some of the reasoning behind it, but the potential abuse, not necessarily by you all, but of such an ordinance, unintentional abuse by public officials that may be designated, I mean, down the road, you don't know what that guy below you in the chain of command is going to do. And if they abuse that power or they use it in the wrong way, it could cost the county quite a bit because, to me, this is a violation, or potentially a violation of our freedom of speech, our right to assemble. Was talking to you about being in the Coast Guard, you know, we took an oath, I took an oath in the military to uphold and defend the Constitution. I'm sure you all took the pretty similar oath, probably includes the Oregon Constitution. My concern is that this is, there's a lot of potential legality or liability there. If somebody is protesting or doing something, union members are picketing and not necessarily you, but one of those assigned people thinks that it's not appropriate, removes them. If there's a lawsuit, you know, you won't win it. I mean, it will cost the county money legally for lawyers and everything, and eventually you're going to end up with a settlement. Because in America, one of the things we get upset about is if you try to infringe upon our rights to assemble, our freedom of speech, try and take away our guns, you know, any of those things. So I just want you to be aware of it. I know that on the 15th, you guys are going to discuss this further, that's what it said in the article. And I would think very, very, I would be very cautious about that type of ordinance that you would pass. Also, one thing it did say in there too is that it's already kind of unofficially being enforced. That's also a very sticky, very sticky, or very dangerous practice if you have officials that are asking people to leave public property. I'm assuming that maybe it has a lot to do with after-hours, people sleeping in these areas and stuff. But I know the city of Eugene has had some serious issues with that and such. So I just want you to, when you're discussing this, to really think about the legal ramifications of it and how it does, you know, it has that potential to infringe upon those rights that we all cherish. All right? Thank you, gentlemen.
And finally, I have Steve Reister.
I came this morning so that we would be available to answer questions relative, relating to Fernridge Community Policing District. A bit of an update. I guess I'm here to say that the citizens group has delivered on its promise. We've been working extremely hard, putting in lots and lots of hours, reaching out as best we can to as many citizens within the district as we can. We've learned some lessons along the way. Just to touch on a couple of those, we do need to do better in Lane County in getting our citizens educated and up to speed as it relates to what do they pay to the county in taxes. The money that these citizens pay supports services, but I think there's clear confusion as to what's covered and what isn't. We've spent enormous time, not just in town halls, but reaching out to civic groups, meeting with just as many folks as we can. We've been extremely busy, covering as many angles of the platform as we can. But the one theme that continues to come up is what just, what are we paying for today versus what you're asking us to consider to pay for under a proposed ballot measure? So I'm here to just point out to the commissioners that we need to do a better job of communicating as a county. We need to do a better job in working with one another. Finally, I would say, this is how it's supposed to work. This is citizens coming and collaborating with government, promoting change, change that's desperately needed. This is how it's supposed to work. But clearly, we all have a lot to learn, and we can do better. So I'll be available to answer any questions relative to the proposal and relative to the board order. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the board this morning? Seen and hearing none, then we'll move on to response to public comments and remonstrance from commissioners and your response to comments. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Magnuson, the reason no one responded to you when you asked us questions is typically we don't go that route during the public comment period. I will contact you, and I'm sure I'm not the only one that will regarding getting more information. Thank you.
Commissioner Storson.
Thanks very much. I wanted to mention that I thought the comment about the proposed ordinance where we're having a hearing next Tuesday at 1:30 about the issue of closure of county facilities and how do we make sure that when people are obstructing a public roadway, or they're obstructing a right-of-way that the public has a right to use, or they have the right to use a public building, that they're not unlawfully excluded from those times and places for doing the public's business that they're entitled to do. Now, the difficulty, of course, is that from time to time, we have instances where people will block a roadway, or they'll block a access, or they'll, they won't leave an office in a building where their business has concluded. And it's not clear whether, who has the authority to remove them or ask them to leave. So I think that the questions will come up when we have the public hearing about the necessity for this ordinance and what harms it's intended to deal with. And I hope we'll get some greater clarification on that. Thanks.
Further remonstrance or response? So I'll just take a minute here to note, Con, that I sent emails to both Public Works and Legal Counsel and the assessor on Friday, that I'm still waiting response from today. So, you know, we are, I'm actively working on some of your issues, and you're aware of that. We've spoken several times on the phone for a couple of years now, almost. So you know what, I'm working to try and resolve your issues as best we can. I will note that, you know, the Chapter 6 amendments that are proposed next week don't only deal with people, you know, asking people to leave county property, but they also deal with the ability for staff to give permission to use county property. You know, this came up in reference to the request that came on a Friday evening for use of the forest work camp, you know, the previous forest work camp as a firefighting camp. And exact ability to delegate the authority to give those permissions was not spelt out clearly. So this is not just about asking people to leave county property. It's also about having staff have the authority to grant use of county property in some ways. So it's not just an exclusionary issue, it's also an inclusionary issue. And I will note that just today, got notice that we, Barnhart Creek Road is closed. It's a county roadway. There's been a tree that's fallen across the road. Our public works staff doesn't have police authority. It's not, you know, it's pretty obvious when a sheriff asks you to leave something that they have the authority, legal authority granted through law enforcement. But a public works person that's putting up barricades, telling the homeowner he can't go down a roadway that's a county roadway, doesn't necessarily have the clear line of authority to have that exclusionary authority to keep somebody out of an unsafe condition. And this is just cleaning, it is a cleanup action and to make sure that those folks that are taking those actions, it's no intent to put anybody's constitutional rights at risk in doing this. It's a matter of just making sure that ultimately, somebody from Public Works that's excluding a homeowner from going down and accessing their own home doesn't end up in a personal lawsuit because he didn't have clear legal authority to exclude that person from that public roadway. So I hope that explains that. But I will invite everybody to come back on the 15th when we actually hold the public hearing for that item in the afternoon. It may not be right at 1:30 because we will be hearing our marijuana regulations first. So that may take a little while. So any other response to public comment? Seen and hearing none, then we'll move on. Any emergency business today? No. We'll move to the consent calendar. I think there's only one item left. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval of the consent calendar as amended.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we'll move to the item that was pulled from the consent counter, which is 5B1, Order 1512-0802, in a matter of making a sole source determination for a temporary shelter and assessment center services and delegating authority to county administrator to execute the determination and contract with the sole source provider. And I believe we have Al Levine and John Arons here from Youth Services. The item doesn't quite correctly describe what we're doing under this item, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted it pulled. So we might be able to talk a little bit about actually what is happening under this item and maybe some of the legislative history as to why we're even having an opportunity to do this. You know, it just says temporary shelter and assessment center services. Maybe if Al and John can come up and maybe explain exactly who's going to be served by that and maybe how we ended up with the ability to even offer this contract. Because I think it's a story people should hear. So if you want to sit at the table as staff or stand at the podium, that's fine.
Fine with standing. Are you okay with that? Commissioners, this idea for the shelter came from a number of different sources and kind of crystallized with our work with our DHS partners around the crossover project. We've had consultation and technical assistance from the Georgetown Center for Juvenile Justice Reform, and it's how to do a better job of working with dual system involved youth. But in that conversation, it was very clear that if we could move further upstream and we could create a shelter that would allow youth to remain in our county who are experiencing disrupted placements, whether they're foster placements or problems in the home, we could have a shelter locally and not be sending these youth out of county and possibly wrap services around the youth and the family or the foster family and maintain that placement. We reduce the trauma of another failed placement, and we reduce the risk of that youth ever entering the juvenile justice system. So this shelter is really not designed to house youth that are in the juvenile justice system. It's designed to prevent youth from ever getting into the juvenile justice system. So it's youth who are DHS-involved, who are at risk of failed placements, who are very high in need, but not yet high risk for juvenile delinquency. And that's who the shelter is designed to serve. This came as a priority through our Public Safety Coordinating Council Juvenile Committee. And we brought it forward with the expert assistance of Alex Kyler, who worked closely with Nancy Nathanson and was able to get a $250,000 earmark kind of from the legislature that came to DHS, through DHS to Lane County for the purposes of starting up the shelter. DHS did a selection process and picked Looking Glass, but we also had to do our own process. And that was done, and Looking Glass will be the provider of the shelter services. It'll be on the Seraboo campus, and it'll be a shelter and assessment center for youth. Do you want it for that?
Thanks, Al. Good morning, Commissioners. County Administrator, the piece I'd like to comment on is the collaboration and cooperation. So this wouldn't be possible without legislative support, wouldn't be possible without the innovation dollars from the state. And it speaks to our collaborative efforts with Department of Human Services Child Welfare, our public work as well as private nonprofit work with Looking Glass. And what we know, what the research tells us, is closer to home, as many services as possible to engage families, keep kids engaged in anything that's pro-social. So it really allows us to serve that high-need population, and it's young people and their families. We're fortunate to have a magnificent resource with our campus, and so I'm appreciative for Commissioner Licon's comments about the assessors using innovation dollars, Alex Kyler's work, and the teamwork that it takes to do this kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And I really, you know, this is a case where an idea came out of the Public Safety Coordinating Council. The board adopted it as a legislative priority. Alex, you know, did a great job up there in Salem identifying the project, getting us the funding for it. And now we're going to start this pilot project that is really essential and is really, you know, not only prevents, you know, youth criminogenic behavior, but also prevents homelessness. Because a lot of these kids that have unsuccessful placements in foster homes end up on the street.
Absolutely.
And this is about preventing youth homelessness, and we all understand that that prevention of youth homelessness lead, you know, if we can keep them off the street, then they don't become chronically homeless as adults. Because it's been, there's a pretty well-proven connection between youth homelessness and chronic homelessness as an adult. So this is really about the front end of preventing homelessness. It's the front end of preventing a lot of prison costs. You know, I just wanted, wanted to pull this long enough to talk about, you know, our great effort by Alex, the great effort by you guys in pulling together the information so Alex could be successful. And then just, you know, what a great program this is and how it will prevent cost in the long run, both in providing service to homeless folks and also in providing, you know, prison beds possibly in the future. So thank you for a job well done.
Thank you. The other piece, from a fiscal perspective, we believe we'll be able to sustain an ongoing basis because of the innovation dollars to get going through BRS dollars from the state, OHP resources. And so we look forward to this not being just a pilot project, but moving on. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions for staff on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of Order 15-12-08-02 in the matter of making a sole source determination for temporary shelter and assessment center services and delegating authority to county administrator to execute the determination and contract with the sole source provider.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seen and hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for coming in, folks, especially to those that may be retiring. We appreciate your service. I should take a moment to thank John and Al for the great service they've provided to Lane County over the years. I understand both of you are either retired and back temporarily. Okay, so, you know, you guys really appreciate all the work you've done for the folks at Lane County, either in mental health or in youth services. It's been, you know, you guys have done a great job, so appreciate your service. So moving on to county administration announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, and I'll second your comment about John and Al. Two great examples of wonderful employees that we have here in this organization who've led really significant efforts and significant change in our Health and Human Service Department between mental health, behavioral services, and youth services. They just have done great work. So we have some gaps to fill there and big shoes, certainly, but we thank both of you for your great service to Lane County and most recently to the young people and families in our community. Wish you all the best for the future. I also, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, wanted to just provide you a brief update on the comments from Mr. Magnuson from last week and this morning. I did have an opportunity yesterday, late yesterday, about 4:00 PM to meet with our county council's office, the assessor, as well as our public works director to discuss this issue and really the subject of the issue from last week's public testimony, which related to a letter that was submitted, that was sent to Mr. Magnuson from our county council on behalf of Assessment and Taxation that specifically requested determination and a statement on the ownership of a manufactured structure on a piece of Mr. Magnuson's property that is the subject of a partition that is currently in Public Works. So that was the conversation that we had yesterday. We are in the process of scheduling a meeting with Mr. Magnuson, so that will happen as soon as we can pull schedules together, and we'll provide an update to the board on that as soon as we're able to meet and get, gain some clarity in the information that is being requested from the assessor's office, again, related to the ownership of a manufactured structure on a piece of property owned by Mr. Magnuson. Couple other updates I wanted to provide you. Last week, the commissioners had an opportunity to tour the Eugene Mission on Wednesday, and it was really, I had an opportunity to join along with that, and just wanted to share a few things with you. Great tour by Jack Tripp and the staff at the mission. They have about 38 staff at the Eugene Mission and a slew of volunteers that really provide outstanding service to people in need in our community. They have around 500 beds at the Eugene Mission. 400 of those are currently open. So about 400 individuals are provided shelter each night in our community at the mission. They also serve 700 people during the day, so they provide food, clothes, in addition to the shelter. 22,000 meals per month are served to people in our community by the Eugene Mission. Of course, they take donations for clothing and from grocery stores, and they said actually that they don't, they don't require any resources from Food for Lane County because they have wonderful partnerships with grocery stores in the community, and they're able to actually get food from those folks at no cost, which is outstanding. One comment that Mr. Tripp made I thought was interesting was that, he said he notes to a number of folks that they, at the Eugene Mission, house the largest mental health shelter in our community. And it's true. They have 400 people there, many of whom struggle with mental health and substance abuse issues. And so he had created an opportunity for us to have a conversation about the potential and possibility on Lane County. and possibility on Lane County, partnering with the Mission as well as other community-based organizations to see what we can do to ensure that we're providing access, mental health and other service needs, access to those services for people at the Mission. So I just wanted to provide that as a follow-up. Thank the Commissioners for taking the time. I know it was appreciated and it's part of our ongoing conversations that we're having with a number of organizations and partners in the community. And I thought I would also just share a couple of these. There was, you've seen some emails come through about conversations they're having at the City of Eugene in Springfield, here in Lane County. And as the winter months have crept up, the concern from making sure that we're providing the appropriate services and shelter for people who don't have a place to stay, particularly during the winter. So you've seen a lot of conversations around the need for a permanent shelter and I think that is growing because, you know, we've, we're pursuing these opportunities like rest stops and, and micro housing and anything that we can do. I think there's a recognition clearly as the Poverty and Homelessness Board has discussed the need for a permanent shelter, another shelter in addition to the Eugene Mission in the community. So that conversation's happening at the Poverty and Homelessness Board. I did send an email to the board yesterday with some details and I don't want to take too much time on this, but I, I want to just note a few things that Lane County is working on. We're not pursuing solutions to poverty and homelessness in a vacuum by ourselves. We have partners in the community, City of Eugene, City of Springfield, HACSA, St. Vincent de Pauls, Shelter Care, the Eugene Mission, and the list goes on and on. Public, private sector, nonprofit organizations that are all working together, many part of the Poverty and Homelessness Board to provide solutions. But in terms of Lane County, and I would also note that the Poverty and Homelessness Board meets next Thursday, December 17th at 12:00 PM at Serbou, in the Carmichael Room at Serbou. Commissioner Farr is a member, a voting member of the Poverty and Homelessness Board and an active participant and contributor to that effort. So that's a great opportunity for people in the community who are interested in discussing with this coalition of stakeholders in the community that are dealing with the issue of poverty and homelessness, talking about solutions. And many of the solutions that they identify come forward to then the agency that's responsible, Lane County, City of Eugene, Springfield, or another entity. So that's a great outlet for folks to provide public comment, testimony and submit ideas. Lane County contributes nearly a million dollars from our general fund each year to the Human Services Commission, which is then distributed to community-based organizations. We provide critical services for youth, adults and families facing poverty and homelessness in our community. We also leverage millions of dollars in state, federal funds through our Human Services Division that spends $15 million per year serving people in need in Lane County. And our great team in the Human Services Division works hard to reduce homelessness among vulnerable populations, to ensure food security, provide skills to at-risk parents, to help them provide a safe and stable environment for their children. You heard from our youth services staff this morning about the work that they do to support that effort. And increase self, increase self-sufficiency for families and individuals through basic needs services such as energy assistance, housing, employment, training, disability, healthcare and income. And of course, the mental health and physical health services that we provide to thousands of individuals and families throughout our community also help provide support. I mentioned St. Vinnie's HACSA sponsors, Shelter Care, of course, their permanent housing projects that we're pursuing and the Board of Commissioners that also sits as the HACSA Board has supported the 54th unit development off of West 11th. That also, this is a housing-first model, single-room occupancy units for difficult-to-house individuals and actively case-manage those folks. So that's the model that we want to pursue here, that has been tested and proved to be effective in Salt Lake City where they have effectively ended homelessness in that community because of the housing-first model, getting people into a permanent housing situation and actively managing their cases. So thanks for your indulgence on that, but I just wanted to provide that context, the great work that, you know, this is self-serving of course, but great work that we're doing here in Lane County to provide service to folks in need and the wonderful efforts of the Poverty and Homelessness Board, that coalition of folks who are actively working to solve that critical issue for us. We're going to have next week a joint meeting with the Fair Board and so there's also been some topic, you know, some conversation about, well, what about the fairgrounds as a location for stuff? So that conversation will likely get into a little bit next week with the Fair Board, so I don't want to take too much time on that. But we have said, you know, there are a number of concerns, both we've heard from some residents in the area as well as the fact that we have a number of events throughout the year and at that facility. And it really is a place where we're welcoming in businesses and individuals from our community and from around the country for events and retail operations and other services. And so we want to make sure really, as the City of Eugene has done through its ordinance, where they make sure that there are not conflicting uses of property, that they don't cite rest stops in dense residential neighborhoods or surrounded by retail business operations, that we make sure that we identify the right location for emergency shelters, rest stops, micro housing, and that they fit with the condition of the surrounding areas. That's why we selected the site of Behavioral Health for two rest stops that have operated for the past year. And we'll be moving those two rest stops from the River Road site. I'll be signing the new lease for that property today and then we'll move as early as later today and throughout this week back to Behavioral Health Site to a new location on that site that is actually better, we believe, in terms of the reins and access and those types of issues. But we cited there specifically because there were not conflicts with residences, there were not conflicts with businesses, or rather, there were adjacencies to critical services that many people in these rest stops need access to. So just wanted to plant that idea with you that as, as folks come forward with creative and new ideas for solving the challenges with poverty and homelessness, it's important that we, for the sake of making progress in solving that issue as well as not creating other conflicts in residential or business communities that we consider conflicting And I think that's it, Mr. Chair. I appreciate your time and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Steve, I appreciate your response, a couple of responses you provided the folks who, we saw a long email template in a sense coming toward us from folks asking about Lane County's role in the homelessness issue. And I think it's important, so I appreciate the fact we're going to have a, a meeting with the Fair Board as well. Has there been discussion, discussion at all by the City of Eugene? Because there seems to be interest in a publicly-owned facility. I don't know the timeline of Eugene City Hall. Has there been discussion where maybe there can be a camp, like a setup there at the vacant city hall grounds? And I don't know if that's something that Mr. Reese has talked to you about or if that's something that's been discussed at the, at the cell meetings. But I don't know the schedule of when Eugene's moving forward, but it seems to me that that's, they have control of that land. Is that something that they would be interested in moving forward on?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lichen, I have not heard that site be specifically proposed. It's my understanding that it may not be a long-term solution because I think within the next year, it's my understanding that there's going to be some activity potentially at that site. So I'm not sure that that's the, that the city would view that as a long-term solution, but I of course can't speak for them. I will say that, I know that the Winter Strategies Subcommittee, Commissioner Farr, you, Commissioner Farr is on that committee and so can speak better than I can, but I heard from Pearl Worth, Pearl Wolf, our staff, one of our staff in Human Services, that at the Winter Strategies Committee of the Poverty and Homelessness Board, there was a discussion about adding an emergency shelter, a year-round shelter, to the strategic plan for the Poverty and Homelessness Board. So I think this is a topic that people are recognizing, okay, we've come up with a number of temporary solutions here for shelter, rest stops, and, and the city is having this conversation about the MASH-style tents. And this is all in response to, you know, well, it's winter, we got to see if we can do it. But I think people are realizing that winter seems to come every year. And so this is not something that, you know, we should sort of wait until November and say, okay, what do we need to do? Let's look long-term. And, and this conversation, the short time that I've been here, seems to be progressing and evolving, which is a good thing, that it's not, we're not trying to repeat the same models over and over each year, but recognizing, okay, we're moving in the right direction, but we really need to look at some more permanent solutions from a temporary shelter standpoint as well as from a permanent housing standpoint. So the, one of the most challenging issues, I think, has been identifying the right location because there really are so many challenges with, you know, with the things that I said, not wanting to have the conflicts of uses in neighborhoods or near businesses. I will say that the Eugene Mission, we toured the Mission last week, they have around an acre and a half, I believe it is, of property that they'd like to see a more permanent housing structure built there, single-room occupancy structure. You know, I don't know if they would contemplate another shelter in that location, but I think there is, there is potential there. And again, there's complementary uses in that area. So that conversation is going to continue with the Poverty and Homelessness Board and my hope is that it will go on throughout the winter and that we'll be in a position in the next year here to pursue a long-term solution and not just continue the sort of temporary winter options.
Thank you. Commissioner Farr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I won't go into too much depth right now, but you're right regarding we're gradually getting in better shape. Two years ago, when the cold snap hit, we scrambled pretty hard prior to your coming to Lane County. And we offered a couple of sites for temporary emergency shelter. And last year, we were a little bit further ahead and we had provided some more, more planned emergency shelter. This year, we're a little bit further ahead on the winter strategies. Next year, hopefully we'll get to a point where we have a year-round strategy that really addresses the, the needs on an ongoing basis so that when, when a police officer tells somebody they can't sleep where they're sleeping, that officer also has an option, has a option of where they can legally actually sleep. And, and by and large, we'll find a way to make certain that the different types of, that people who are homeless for different reasons, their needs are being met for the reasons that they're homeless, not just because of the fact that they are homeless. You know, there are so many different reasons that cause people to be either temporarily or chronically out of housing. You're addressing that, Mr. Marka Highsky. And I wanted to mention that, you know, the Poverty and Homelessness Board started its work not much more than a year ago and in, just coincidentally almost, in conjunction with your coming to Lane County. And I wanted to mention something, Steve, and I'm going to say this to the public in general, and regarding your personal attention to the issues surrounding poverty and homelessness, you've given it a real high level of attention and you're addressing it in a very systematic fashion, rather than, rather than being just reactive, you're looking for solutions that really are going to work in, in general, both to fit inside of our organization and inside of our budget, but most significantly, doing cooperation with other jurisdictions, with nonprofits and with private industry to make certain that what the approaches that we're taking are, once again, proactive and sustainable in nature. You know, you pointed out that you showed me a letter, Mr. Marka Highsky, that you wrote when I think you were 12 years old to your congressman about, about homelessness and about working on homelessness issues when you were 12 years old. To me, that, that you brought that with you to Lane County, it's not something we asked you about, but it's something that you brought with you and as a part of the package. And I want to personally thank you for the work that you have done to once again make a sustainable and cooperative effort to address the issues surrounding homelessness and not just the homelessness that we see across the street and the homelessness that we see sometimes on the street corner, but chronically homeless and addressing on a sustainable and more permanent solution. Thank you very much, Ms. Marka Highsky.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Thank you very much. You know, one, one way we can get a little perspective on the fairgrounds is if we had some representation of people that lived in the area around the fairgrounds. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but the board voted, I think it was four to one, to not appoint anyone from my district surrounding the fairgrounds, precisely because the board, at least at that time, said, oh, well, the fairgrounds serves the entire community, so it's not necessary for a resident of the fairgrounds. And so I just want to say, it sounds a little bit like there's two things going on right now, which is that the neighborhood's really important when the county doesn't want to pursue vacant property, 55 acres at the, at the current fairgrounds location. Not all of it is occupied all the time. And some of the neighbors that have come forward to me have said there are parts of the fairgrounds that have never been used in their 10, 15, or 20 years of, of living in that neighborhood. So I don't think that it's a good idea to exempt a huge amount of land, 55 acres in the City of Eugene, from this discussion. I'll just give you that perspective. And if, if we really are interested in the perspective of the neighborhood organizations, then we should ask them about a particular subset of our citizens, our homeless citizens. Now, we're already doing quite a bit in the area of homeless. We already house people that are convicted of crimes, either because they're on, in a home setting somewhere in the county. We're already paying for that. We already obviously are paying for the Lane County jail and many of the people that are there are homeless. So we're already spending a lot of money on the homeless in a, in a broad sense. And I, I'm really happy to hear about some efforts to do something. And you're right, it is amazing that the government, including Lane County and the City of Eugene and Springfield and all the school districts who get the reports from the, from the, that they put together under the McKinney-Vento Act, so they know the number of homeless children that are in their school districts. And it's good that we're now recognizing, as you pointed out, that the winter comes around every year. Okay? And I think it's great, we're finally recognizing that. But I, I just think that more needs to be done and the fact that there isn't a public facility, that the federal, state, local government, there's not a public facility to deal with this problem, yet it's such a huge problem and it's not just the Eugene problem and it's not just a Springfield problem, it's a national problem. And our community isn't that different from the rest. And one thing I'll say very positively is I think that the Salt Lake City and County Government has really been a pioneer on this. Because if you use the phrase, "housing first," if you get someone with decent housing, then they can look for a job, then they can get beyond a fourth grade reading level, then they can deal with their alcohol or drug addiction. So it starts with the housing. And I really think that we ought to commit ourselves to the goal of a publicly-owned, you know, facility for people that are homeless. And recognize, that's a, that's a root of a lot of our problems, that we don't have that. And it's really a shame to think that in one of the wealthiest countries in the world, people are begging on the streets. They're begging on the streets in one of the wealthiest countries in the world. We actually can do better than this. And I also want to say, Steve, I think it's great you've taken a big interest in this. And I think that the time is past, I really do think the time has passed, that we should have been doing this much longer. But today's the new day, let's keep working on it. And I think that our model ought to be housing first.
Mr. Marka Highsky?
Mr. Chair, just a quick response. Thank you, Commissioner Sorenson. And I wanted to provide a clarification about the fairgrounds. You're absolutely right that there, we do have a conflict, that we have this large regional facility that attracts businesses and customers and folks from all over and it does have a kind of county-wide, regional focus. It's also in a neighborhood. And so there, there is that existing conflict in that location. And so one of the things that we'd like to see is, you know, just managing that dynamic. And so the, the use that I think many people feel would create a conflict is a really, a really temporary shelter in that location. So rest stop, tents, you know, the MASH-style tent and emergency shelter. I think there are a number of folks who feel like that is not the right location. is not the right location for, for an emergency shelter. However, there, there are some portions of that property that potentially, theoretically, could be, could fit in with the neighborhood setting better, and could meet the need if it was more of a permanent housing-type facility. So that is being contemplated at the, I would say, you know, between the Poverty and Homelessness Board and at the staff level. We, in order for us to head in a direction on, on an issue like that, we need board direction, right? We don't have that. So right now, these, we've had some people who've engaged us in conversations and asked about it, we're responding, providing some information, considering that, and I think that in the coming months, months, that's likely a conversation we'll bring to the board. So it's not that, you know, we don't feel like there are potentials for some of that vacant property, if there's no use for it by the fairgrounds, but we do want to see that, if we're going to use it for a purpose other than for the fairgrounds, that it, it has a complementary use both in the, in the residential neighborhood, and for the mission and purpose of, of the fairgrounds. The only thing I would note here that I didn't mention is, we are also considering, we have not finalized this, but we are considering allowing some additional car camping, we're looking at the right location for that, that is a request that's come out of the Poverty and Homelessness Board, and if we identify, and this would be for the winter months, some additional car camping location that would provide a safe place, and it would be run through the already-existing car camping program, where people have to sign up, and there are vouchers that are provided for that, so it's a, you know, so the number is limited, but it would be a slight expansion of that program, so I just wanted to add those two comments to it.
Mr. Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a clarification on, on, I thought it was the Housing First in Utah, not Salt Lake City, isn't it the entire state? I thought it was the, I thought it was the state of Utah actually went after this, not just a certain area. And so my question, if that's the case, I've not heard really much of anything coming out of Salem on this issue, that we're, we're, we seem to be attacking it, we seem to be taking the lead, where's the state legislature? Where's the governor? So if, if this is really a, and, you know, it was interesting when Mayor Piercy called the governor out, that we, you know, that we need help, where is the state on this? And I, because I remember when this first was, was talked about, it was talking about Housing First in Utah, and that the legislative government and the governor were behind this and supporting it. So my question is, where is the state? And, and I don't need an answer now, but maybe if yourself, you can get together with Mr. Kyler, maybe we can come up with some sort of answers from Salem on, you know, if they're going to keep dinking around on punishing business, or are they going to, or are they going to work on maybe dealing with this issue as well? It'd be nice to get some support from, from Salem, so that not all the resources are coming out of our pockets here locally. So I, that's it, so if we could just make that clarification to find out where the, where the governor and the legislature are on this issue. Appreciate it, thanks.
Yes, thank you, great point.
Mr. Far, and we need to move on with the agenda.
Are we having a second round here, or just, are we having a second round?
It appears so.
Okay.
I'd like to move the agenda along here.
Commissioner Lichen, I'll get a report to the, to the board regarding what's been happening at the state level. We had, we had a bill that was in the legislature last session regarding Housing First, that narrowly didn't pass, and we're anticipating something forward, going forward again through the legislature. And Speaker of the House Cortek was down in, in a meeting just a couple of weeks ago, I'll give you a report on that also. So the state is, is paying attention to Housing First, it is, it is the state of Utah, Salt Lake City is certainly the leader in what's been going on in the state of Utah. I just wanted to mention to Commissioner Sorenson, the Poverty and Homelessness Board is made up of 12 different members, from the city of Eugene, city of Springfield, and Lane County, as well as Workforce Partnership, HACSA, St. Vincent de Paul, Oregon Department of Human Services. The board, the board's been meeting since, since early last year, and if you go to the site, the Poverty and Homelessness Board site, you can see all of the agendas and all of the minutes, and much of the, much of the, many of the items that you talked about, that you mentioned in your speech just now, have been covered at some, one level or another by the Poverty and Homelessness Board. Things are moving, we're all a little bit tense about how slowly sometimes things move, but things are moving in the right direction. The Poverty and Homelessness Board, every single minute, set of minutes is available online for anybody who wants to look at that. And indeed, we all received a lot of signatures on a petition over the weekend, 100, 241, I think, signatures on a petition regarding homelessness. I sent a copy of the, a link to the Poverty and Homelessness Board minutes and agendas to that, to all of the signers on that petition. So if, if people do have questions, many of the questions that are being raised have been addressed in one fashion or another, and the Poverty and Homelessness Board certainly is proactive in, in responding to the needs in the community. And while we're, while it is a work in progress, it is a work that is actually in progress.
Mr. Sorenson.
You know, one of the things that I think has been a real positive thing that some local governments around the country have done, is they've connected a problem that, that, that the government has as a administrator of parks and open space, they've connected that with their issue of homelessness. And in those communities that have done this, they've been able to have a very good screening process of people who have their own vehicle, who've passed a responsibility test of some sort, who have passed a drug and alcohol screening test, and have received some sort of training on what to do when people come into a park and start shooting it up, or what to do when they are disturbing other guests at the park, and they're there because they're homeless, they're there, and the, the government has, has connected these two needs. One, a lot of our, a lot of Lane County's parks don't have that kind of protection, and number two, there are people that will fit into this category of being able to have their own vehicle that they can live in, and pass the test, and otherwise be responsible, and not need a public bus line, or something like that. I would say that, that's an example of, of an opportunity that we have, that would, would definitely assist us in performing a function that we have, and also help solve a bigger problem out there. If it's 26, or if it's 30, or if it's 50 parking areas that we have, and I don't know how, how big that imprint is, but that could be quite a few people that we could be helping, and could be helping us.
With that, we'll move on to item 6B in the agenda, which is Quarterly Financial Report, and I believe we have Judy Williams, our Strategic Planning and Budget Supervisor. And I'll turn it over to you, Judy.
Mr. Chair, as Judy gets set up, oh, it looks like you're already set up. This, I will just say that we've now, I think this is a year, that we're going on our quarterly updates for quarterly financial reports, as well as on the adoption of the board's strategic plan, which we'll talk about next. So, you know, this is, hopefully this has worked for, for all of you. The goal here was, has been, and is to provide you with brief, but important information about our local economy, our national economy, trends that we're seeing, give you some good data points and data analysis from that standpoint, and then just to dive in a little bit and touch base regularly on our budget, particularly the General Fund and the Road Fund, where we've had challenges, we try to incorporate other funds if, if there are issues there. So, again, hopefully this works, happy to take any questions after Judy goes through, and, and if you'd like us to continue to do this, we certainly think it has some value.
Thank you. Good morning, Judy Williams again, from the Budget Office, and I'm just going to present the first quarter financial look, and this is for July through September of this current year, so we're looking back a little bit. And this report, I'm going to go briefly, I know you have a packed agenda this morning, and a time certain coming up, so this is out there on the website with materials, and I'll do just a quick analysis for you right now. So I'm going to start with just a couple of economic indicators. So nationally, we have a few statistics for you, and then I'm going to go into the local economic indicators. So, very quickly, CPI is at a 237. A national level in unemployment has gone down, so that's positive, and I will talk about Lane County in a moment. We have inflation, which has gone down just slightly, decreased 0.2 percent. Health insurance overall is for the nation, CPI for a couple of these health impacts or aspects are medical care and health insurance, and those have gone up 1.4 percent in that quarter, and also 1.9 percent for health insurance. And just to point out, Lane County would have seen about a 4 percent increase in health rates for this current year, however, that was mitigated by going self-funded August Quickly, the local economic indicators, so not quite as positive, so unemployment had gone up just slightly in these past last few months, at 6.5 as of September. You're probably used to seeing that bubble graph, and it hasn't been updated, but we did just get this yesterday from our state economist, and this addresses the jobs that have been gained since the recession, since 2008. So this is pretty current, as of October 25, we've seen 60 percent of those jobs regained, so 12,000 jobs, and it's mostly the manufacturing sector that has not come back fully yet. Real estate, this has also gone up slightly over the quarter, so average price of home grew slightly, about 3 percent to about 235,000. Building permit activity also has gone up slightly over that quarter, with residential permits increasing about 4 percent. Commercial permits have gone, we're just one commercial permit lower from this time last quarter, and so that's a decrease of about 0.2 percent. Very briefly, the General Fund, so we're looking at two of our major funds here at the county, so General Fund and Road Fund, some of the distressed funds, and we're looking at actuals versus budget, and we are positive and within the budget. The pie chart shows the makeup of revenue that the General Fund receives, and for the first quarter, we've received about 9 percent of our budget, so about 6.8 million, and a lot of the timing plays into this as well. So the next quarter, when I'm reporting, we'll see a larger spike here as property payments, property tax payments come in at that time. And there's just more information about how that's broken up, and the amount of percentages within the revenue funds for the General Fund. Expenses, made up of material and services and personnel, we've received, or we've paid out about 19 percent, and that's about 12 million, and this is slightly decreased over the same quarter last year, about 0.7 percent, and that's likely due to vacancy rates. And very briefly, the Road Fund, again, that is positive and within budget, although it is a distressed fund that we are paying more attention to. So the first quarter, we have received about 14 percent, almost 15 percent of the actuals of the revenue, and it's down just slightly, 0.4 percent from last year. And then for expenses, we are also positive and within budget, and to date, we've received about, or we've paid out in expenses 8 million, so about 26 percent. And this is mostly all, all operating, or all pieces of the Road Fund have been reduced as we're just watching that fund closer. And then there's a little bit more detail in how much personnel versus material and services, and year-to-date. So that's just a very brief update on the financial look for the last quarter, and I can open it to any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Doesn't look like we have any.
Just a comment, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
This is a great report, Ms. Williams. I'm looking at it now, the graphics, the, the charts are very well done, and anybody can see this, is it online other than, on the, as an agenda item today, has that been placed online already?
Yes, it's online, it's as part of the agenda, so you can look at it in more detail.
So people can look to the agenda item on today's agenda and click View Items, and you get the entire quarterly financial report, which is, is good reading, you give us a very brief presentation on it, but there's a great deal of information in there, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are no other questions or comments, and we'll move on to item 6C, which is Lane County 2014 through 2017 Quarterly Strategic Plan Update. And again, any introductory comments, Mr. Marka Highsky?
Mr. Chair, I just, you know, we're going to talk this afternoon, we're going to have a work session to update our strategic plan, so I just make a, and I'll repeat this later, but I think it's important on this one, too. The board adopted the 2014 to 2017 strategic plan just about one year ago, I can't remember the exact date, but it was, was it?
November 4.
November 4, okay, so just 13 months ago. So this is, and we're doing quarterly updates on the plan, because this is not a plan we wanted to develop and put on a shelf, this is a plan that we want to actively use, update, adjust, as we complete goals, take them off, as we add new things, that we're tracking it closely. So I will just note that in the past year, we've completed 18 goals that the board identified, 18 goals on your strategic plan have been completed, and we'll report on that overview later, and I'll go through some examples of the outstanding work that's happened, I won't take the time to do that now, but we've also continued to expand the, our strategic planning effort and incorporate consistency throughout the organization. So all of our departments have one-page strategic plans that are consistent and reflect what the board has identified as its higher-level priorities and goals, and I think some of the keys to our success have been, one, the support from the board, that you all regularly talk about your priorities, you talk about the goals that you've established, and that carries throughout the organization. I think that clarity of priorities and the simplicity of the priorities is really great. We regularly talk about safe, healthy county, vibrant communities and infrastructure, it's really easy, and it's very applicable to what our focus is. And then we have an outstanding team in this organization throughout all of our departments that are implementing these goals and making great progress. So again, we'll get into more detail on the annual review this afternoon, but just wanted to set the context for this quarterly update on the wonderful progress that we've made on achieving our strategic objectives in the last year.
Thank you, good morning. Again, and I'll briefly go through, we have about 15 minutes for this, and as County Minister mentioned, we have safe and healthy county is our number-one priority, vibrant communities are, are another priority, and infrastructure, and I won't go through all of the bullet points right now, but these are our objectives under these priorities that we are working towards. And this is going to be a, a brief summary this morning, so I just wanted to show you that this material is on the agenda, but it's also on our strategic planning website, where you can open each quarterly report, see a lot more detail as we go through every action item that's been accomplished, some that we're on target with, and we have a lot more discussion in those quarterly reports, so those are available if you would like to refer back to them. So I'm just going to briefly walk through some of these, and again, later today, we'll have a work session where we can address these further, and possibly add new ones or adjust any of these. So in terms of completed action items towards our strategic plan, I've put several up here, so brief summary, and partnerships and collaborations are really kind of what I'm going to focus on throughout, as we'll see, there's a lot of collaboration, partnership happening to get some of these completed. So very briefly, Community Corrections Act and Justice Reinvestment Funding was received, and we had an increase over the last biennium, so this is great news, a lot of work went into this effort, and this is really helping to keep that public safety system whole due to the increased funds. We've worked on the Public Safety 10-Year Plan outline, and that's been before the board as well. Briefly, the items related to the CHIP, there's a lot of progress here, and one example of a partnership, Farm- a partnership, Farm and Food Coalition. In terms of the nutrition programs, there's a lot of efforts going on, and one example was some tours of farmers' markets that have taken place from women, infant, children clients, so they can see all of the farmers' markets that are out there and available. A lot of work's gone with, gone on with ACEs, Adverse Childhood Experiences, and you were recently updated at the Board on that. So a lot of positive work going on. More kind of on the economic development side, our vibrant communities priority, we have completed the item for rezoning and redevelopment of Goshen, and that field period is over. We are partnering with Workforce Development to provide some excellent training programs, so that's a partnership that's been very successful, awarding local employers some money so that they can have training programs in their organizations. And another action item for vibrant communities that are related to land management, there's one analyzing a fee structure, which you'll see later coming to your Board. A lot of work in keeping improvements going and creating efficiency, there's been several key positions that have been recently hired that will hopefully continue to keep these efficiencies going, so new land management manager, a couple of senior plans examiners have been hired, a building official, and this will help keep that progress going. A couple of items that we're monitoring is really just exploring the support for the co-adopted Glenwood refinement plan, although that's been adopted, it's now some of the work and partnerships that we're going to be having with the City of Springfield. And again, later today, we'll be talking about some of these that we're monitoring, and maybe look at response time for building permits and commercial permits. And for some of the infrastructure items, there's been a lot of progress as well, a lot of the completed road funding items have come before you in prior quarterly updates. And so in terms of the next action items that are still on target are complete, Countywide Facilities Condition Assessment, and that is happening, there's been HVAC plan that's been updated, elevator plan has been updated, and some more coming this summer, like the Lane Events Center is a big one that's coming up. And developing new space concepts, yeah, there's been a lot of work in, again, partnerships with the New Courthouse Facility Project, and a lot of, that third bullet, continue to refine and follow space allocation plan, so there's been a lot of progress on this as well, as we've got our Assessment and Taxation Department relocating currently into a new space so that we can upgrade these areas. A couple of action items that we're monitoring are related to just more facilities management system planning and getting, identifying what some of those resources are and to prioritize some of the future capital improvement projects. And then also securing leases with private or public entities, so also always looking at options there. Later on, if the City of Eugene is moving out of this building, then there's additional space and trying to find the best use of this building. So these are just a couple of quick updates on some of the action items, again, will come before you later today. The next step is continue working with departments, so as County Minister mentioned, we have, our departments have a one-pager, and they're currently working on getting more of the detail related to those plans. We're working on measurable outcomes, so hopefully this time next year, we'll have some outcomes, identify that we can tell you a little bit more about the progress that's happening as it relates to outcomes for some of these action items. We're looking at a calendar that will hopefully be on the, attached to the one-pager that you can look to to see on a yearly basis, what is it that's happening and where are these key items at in the calendar year, as well as always ongoing items, so we're always going to have a budget adoption process when the legislative sessions are happening, so we're working on that calendar. And then again, later today, you'll be reviewing this in more detail and then possibly adding new items and updating those. So that's all I have for you today, just a quick, brief update, and I can open it to questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions? We'll be seeing you this afternoon for the work session then, so thank you. So moving on to County Council announcements.
Chair, members of the Board, I have no specific announcements, but I am writing on the next item.
Okay, so then we'll move on to Item 7B, although we will have an exec session today, just want to remind everybody of that. Order 15120803 in the matter of the formation of the Fernridge Community Policing District, and we'll turn this over to Mr. Dingle.
I just should let the Board know that there are folks here from the City of Vanita and also from the Citizens Group, if you have specific questions. The matter before the Board today is initially, well, is the first step in sort of starting down this process, and the way to think about it is, and I've talked to the person that Commissioner Lykan recommended, is the person who knows everything about these special districts, and we both agree that the interplay between Chapter 451 districts and 198 districts are clear as mud, so, we agree on that. So what I've done is, I've put together, this is a 451 district as opposed to a 198 district, and what gets confusing is, is that there are times where the Chapter 451 incorporates certain parts of Chapter 198. And I gathered from the discussion of the Board that you were interested in more rather than less public input, so there's one reading of 451 that would say that you could just adopt this order and then have another order setting the election, and that would be the end of it. But instead, what we've done is we've gone back and incorporated the 198 provisions for public input in hearings, that's what's at the end of the order on paragraph number 13. The dates we're working against are absolutely, excluding your downtime as a Board, is 50 days backwards from February 26, which is when the matter has to be submitted to the, to the Secretary of State, and you have, you have two meetings that, because of the way the statute is written, you have to have at least 50 days. So I made one minor change at the request of, there's a typo, but the one minor change at the request of Ms. Moody to paragraph seven, the last sentence would read, "The Fernridge Community Policing District has submitted a 15-year operating budget to the Lane County Budget and Financial Planning Manager."
Just remove the word "sustainable."
Yes, and then add it where it says Lane County, delete "finance manager" and add, and replace it with "Budget and Financial Planning Manager," which I guess is Ms. Moody's official title. And then just looking forward, and Chair Bozovich can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the thought is, is that during those two public meetings, I've spoken with the representative from the City of Vanita, is that those two meetings, the one meeting in January and the one meeting in February, that the city would come back with their aspirational goals that would all be incorporated, not unlike what we did with the jail. The reason this is critical is that this, the, this order has to be adopted by the city, and they're meeting on the 14th, which is sort of an automatic trigger for the next portions of it, and for us to make our 50-day, to get everything into this window, that has to happen on that schedule. I will say that talking to my colleagues around the state, they find it remarkable that we've done all of what we've done in, since October 20th. This is typically a two-year or three-year planning process, so this is moving at light speed. That's all I have unless you have a specific question of me.
I think I've heard something about moving at light speed or warp speed from, from Mr. Reister before, so. I want to walk through the process a little bit, just so I can make sure everybody's clear. And it took me multiple readings of 451 and 198 to understand what you're recommending for us to do, because it is not clear in either of those sections of ORS what the exact process is, it kind of becomes clear as mud in a couple places. But what you're, what you're recommending, and I think with the concurrence of Mr. Jones, is the most conservative approach to the interpretation of ORS 451 and 198, which is that it requires us to have two public hearings, and then after the second public hearing is when we actually pass an order that places it on the ballot.
Correct.
So following that, this is basically the, the first initiation order that we have to adopt, and then hold a public hearing no sooner than 30 days from the date we adopt this, this initiation order, and in that, in the ORS, it does say that a city that's within the district has to co-adopt the same initiation order. So if we adopt it today, then we have the 30-day calendar, which brings us out to your projected date of January 12 for public hea, for the first public hearing. At the end of that hearing, we'll have to adopt a, what's referred to in, I think it's 198810 as, as Order of Formation, and set the final hearing no sooner than 20 days after that, so that's where the 50 days comes from, is we have this 30-day period, we have to give notice for the first hearing and a 20-day period for the second hearing. And then after that second hearing, because the district includes the setting of a permanent tax rate, we have to refer to the ballot automatically, which requires a third order from the Board.
Correct.
So my understanding is, while we're doing this process and we're asking the city to adopt this initial order just to set the first hearing, in that second order, we can incorporate, you know, the desires of the City of Vanita to have, you know, different pieces such as, you know, references to the Advisory Committee into the second order. There is no real requirement clearly set out in the ORS for co-adoption of what they call the Order of Formation, but I am going to ask the Board to concur in directing staff to request the city concur with that second order also before we go on to the final hearing and putting this on the ballot, because I think that's really, that's when we'll actually have wrapped into, possibly after our public hearing and all the testimony, and we come up with a final order of formation, that's when we actually should have most of what the City of Vanita may be concerned about wrapped into our Board order in the forms of either whereas references or, or, you know, therefore references in the, in the second final order. This first order is mostly dealing with statutory requirements that are contained in ORS 451485,
Correct.
Which has mixed references to needing a budget and a few other items, and it contains the initiating phrase of forming the district, but it's about setting that, that first hearing 30 days out, and, and needing the city's concurrence to move forward with that hearing. The second order, though, is, is I think our opportunity to wrap in the City of Vanita's, you know, I think what, what we, I would expect them to do is pass a resolution separate from a co-adoption, our order that may have some things they want us to add into the final order.
Right. And I think that that's, that's correct, I mean, the, there's certainly nothing, I mean, because this is a 451 district, it's absolutely, I mean, the statute's clear, this, this order needs to start the, to start the process going, you're correct, there's nothing that says that you can't, that it's prohibited, what your suggestion is. And I do, I really do want to emphasize, I mean, you could look at a reasonable reading of 4, Chapter 451 would require, would say that you only, basically to get it on the ballot, would be to simply comply with 451485 and 451487, and what we've done is, like I said, I think the way you described it is very clear, the most conservative view of this, which is, someone might raise a challenge to that, they certainly can't raise, there certainly could be a challenge to the additional process that's been built into this.
And I think the advantage of taking this conservative approach is, it does offer two opportunities for public input in a public hearing format before we actually vote to place it on the ballot.
That's correct.
And if we follow my suggestion to request co-adoption of the final order, it also offers the City of Vanita another opportunity to basically opt into the district after we drafted that final order.
As well as other, anybody else that wants to offer their aspiration or their concerns.
Excellent. Any, any other questions, Commissioner Lykan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chair Bozovich, I think you outlined that quite well, and so I appreciate it. I think this is a good approach to take. I think when you look at special districts today, there's not a lot of special districts being created because they are a little bit complicated, and I don't know if they've gotten more complicated over the years, look at Mr. Jones, if he's nodding on that one, because I think they were easier to do years ago, and they, and so where we are today, but I think, I think you outlined that quite well. Again, what I'd like to focus in on as well is this, this is not coming from the Lane County Board of Commissioners, this is coming, again, from a group of citizens, and I think the, if we can take an approach that, I like how you suggest that, a conservative approach, but yet a very pragmatic approach moving forward on this, I think makes a lot of sense. I would also, and I'll just, you know, the agenda team, I think, can make this decision going forward, but I know that when we worked with the Florence community on setting up a district there, we actually were in Florence, I don't know, I'm going to look to Chair Bozovich to see if he thinks it makes sense to actually hold this, maybe a part of, at least part of this, or the hearing in Vanita, if that's a potential, I'll look to you for that, I'm not beholden to that either way, but because this district is really formed in that West Lane area with Vanita being the closest city, that may make some sense especially for the citizens if they want to have the opportunity to, to comment to the Board on this, so I'll look to your leadership on that. But I appreciate it, Mr. Dingle, thank you very much, really appreciate the work here, and concur with Mr. Jones, who I've known for many years and highly respect him, and especially in, around this area, I think he's as good as they are in the state, and I really appreciate his expertise on this as well, but thank you to the citizens, I mean, this is, this wouldn't be happening if it weren't for you, and it's, so I think that's where all the credit should be, is laying before you, you obviously have a lot of passion, and that's what's important, so appreciate that, but again, Mr. Chair, I think you outlined this quite well on, on the approach, appreciate it, thank you.
And Chair, I would, if I could, I think it is important to single out the, the work that the staff has done, they really have made a yeoman's effort, specifically Mr. Kyler, the assessor, Mr. Coles and his, Ms. Robansky from his office, Ms. Moody, Ms. Jones, the people out of Public Works drawing the boundary, I mean, it's taken a lot of people to, to make this, to get us to this point.
Excellent. Any further questions? Commissioner Storson?
I just had a question about the two measures, so we're, we're working on both the extension measure and this measure, are there, are those the two that we're going to the voters in, in May of 2016?
Right, that's the, yes, Chair Bozovich, Commissioner Storson, that's correct, you threw me when you said two measures, yes, the OSU extension one is separate, yes, and I believe, I'm going to look to Mr. Kyler, you're writing the memo for that now? I'm getting the affirmative nod.
Okay. So, and what is the proper terminology, the voters will be asked to vote on a measure, they'll be asked to vote on a levy, they'll be asked to vote on a?
No, it's a, it's a.
Something, a thing?
No.
Can you help me with what, when people say, well, what are we voting on anyway? And I'll say, well, very confidently. And I'll say, "Well," very confidently, "I'll say what you're about to tell me."
You're talking about which one?
Well, let's take the, this one first, the one that's the subject of this work session, the matter of creating the special policing district.
Okay, well, that is, and it's actually, I'm looking for the precise language that's going to be in the board, because it, I think it sets it out pretty clearly, which I don't know if you have this in front of you, but it's set out in paragraph seven and eight of this initiating order, which talks about, they're going to be, the residents of the proposed district will vote on a permanent rate, an increase in their permanent rate of, it's estimated to be a dollar, a dollar eighty per thousand of taxable.
But will they be voting on one thing, that is to create the district and to set the permanent rate?
Yeah, it's all one, yes.
It's all one thing? And only the residents of that district?
Correct.
Of that proposed district?
Yes, you can't vote to have the district and not, you couldn't vote yes to the district, no to the increase in the tax rate, that's not.
Or, "I like the rate, I like the district, but I think the rate should be higher," or "I think the rate should be lower."
No, no, that's not going to be an option.
The proposers, or the government that's referring, in our case, we're setting that rate. Okay, and the other one, what's it called?
It's a, want to come up, Mr. Kyler, he's working on the.
Is it a five-year levy?
I think it is, isn't it?
It's just a, Commissioner's Alex Kyler, Intergovernmental Relations Manager, it's just a five-year local option levy.
Okay, and that's countywide?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Storson, that was one of the, one of the issues is getting the, that is obviously critical, is getting the boundary drawn for the district, because only the people in the district vote for it. And then, of course, the other issue is to get the required value and stuff, that obviously the assessor needs to know who's in the district and who's out of the district. That's the only way they arrive at the, that's how the, if you look at paragraph eight, that's how the assessor was able to arrive at the estimated taxable assessed value within the district.
Great. Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I wanted to thank you and your leadership with this, and all the staff, and the city, and citizens that have been involved in this. This is, I believe, the second district that this board has been involved with. And the first one, since I've been on the board, was the Red River Water District, which was quite a bit different than this. And we went through a fairly quick process to make that happen, but this one here is moving much faster and much more complicated. So, thank you for the time involved in this and the great work. And I, too, am excited about this opportunity to see this proposal go before the citizens, because I think that it might potentially have supported via potential solution for public safety improvement throughout the county over time. You know, this proposal is including dedicated employees to the district, a considerable number, almost, a little more than 50% of employees, deputies, I should say, for this district, more than what we have for the entire county. So, you know, that's encouraging. It also includes mental health services, provision of mental health services, a couple jail beds, and also a district attorney to actually prosecute the activity that takes place in here, so it's really kind of a full package. That, it isn't inclusive, because there's other services that will be accessed, you know, I'm sure through community correction dollars for, whether it's substance abuse or other needs to help folks in the correction, in their correction needs. But, you know, thank you to everyone involved, and I'm looking forward to seeing this. I'd like to, I understand the reason we need to move this forward today and the different co-adoptions needed, but I do believe that there's the necessary time and the commitment here that we want to make sure that it's right before it's placed on the ballot and it's supported by as many people as possible, the city of Veneta and the citizens that are working to move this forward. So, thanks again for the great work.
So, I wanted to provide the opportunity, seeing that Mr. Reister made a trip downtown here to see if he wants to add anything to, maybe even address the minor change made in the language, and I don't know if the folks from Veneta want to address us at all also.
Thank you, Chair. There have been some changes. One of the things that we're learning in this process is making sure that the message is accurate is critical. And when you, when you look at the budget, when you look at the tax rate that's required to support that budget, and you're offering a permanent rate, it's critical to get it right. We have worked a lot of hours, but we've worked with the county elections officials to match up with some precinct lines. And in doing that, it has changed the boundary line that we initially proposed. That's saving the county money, time, and effort. Those changes were submitted last week. Well, what happens is, we get the final boundary, which we have now, it all gets handed back to the assessor's office. And the tax manager gets to work on coming up with the taxable assessed value within the district. We will not have those final numbers until, at the earliest, first of next week. So here's what we know. We know that the taxable assessed value will change, we know that the value will go up based on an expansion of boundary line, and we also know that, given all budget items remain the same, that that lowers the total rate. So, our group has not put out a final rate, our group has put out an estimated rate. So when we talk about, at the county level, when we talk about our submitting a budget, sustainability is a really big word. What we want to do is see the final product, make sure that we are absolutely all in agreement, county and citizens, that no more changes are required to the budget before we publish the rate. So we've changed some language, we took out the word sustainable, because we're not there yet. I don't want to say we have a sustainable budget until we have a sustainable budget. Now, off the record, I would tell you, look, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out, we know where we're at, we know the rate's going to come down, we just don't know at what level. Our work has been focused on affordability, and that's why we continue to push for these changes, to make sure that we're getting the absolute best we can, keeping a holistic approach to the budget and the services that need to be offered, while at the same time understanding that folks have to pay for this. So we've been in no hurry to publish a permanent rate or fix ourselves on a permanent rate until we get these numbers finalized. A&amp;T hopefully will get that back to us quickly, and we're within a few days of getting everything set. But I don't want to see is go home and, "Tonight I read a paper and all of a sudden, well, we don't have a sustainable budget." That's not accurate. So, other than that, I would answer any questions you have from our group.
Commissioner Storson?
Thank you very much. I was interested in hearing your perspective on the idea of the name of the district as a policing district. And I was thinking about this, driving in to work today, and we have often used words like "public safety" to describe maybe a breadth of services, and yet, maybe at a simple level, we're just trying to provide some policing. And I'm just curious, does that mean that you're going to have to take out some of these other things that are related to a vibrant public safety system? You're going to have to take out, say, prosecution, or you're going to have to take out drug rehabilitation, or other things that contribute to a more systemic attack of the public safety problem? Or are you going to say, "Hey, you know, we can only afford so much, so what we're going to do is we're going to have an enhanced policing, so we'll call it a policing district." I'd just like to hear your perspective on whether you have money for all those other things, and maybe you don't, and that's why you're dropping the thing back to policing?
Well, community policing is a platform, it is a methodology, it is an approach to how officers work within their communities, or with residents of communities, to provide the component of public safety that police cover. The reason that I don't personally like the idea of calling this a public service district, or a public safety district, is because public safety means fire, it means police, it means all kinds of things.
It means the military.
Yeah. We have adopted, and this really started with work between the city of Veneta and Lane County Sheriff's Office, this idea of adopting a community policing strategy is not one that is new, it is one that is needed. And so, our group, in looking at the kinds of things, and I'll state this differently, we have, we have problems. So, we built into this platform solutions to those problems, in other words, we're trying to fill the holes. It doesn't make a lot of sense to add a whole bunch of deputies, but to still have a problem keeping them at Lane County Jail. It doesn't make any sense to have deputies out doing work when the district attorney can't prosecute or won't prosecute the cases, because they don't have the resources to do it. It doesn't make any sense to address school resource officers and working with disenfranchised youth without addressing opportunity for youth. It doesn't make any sense to have all of these deputies doing work within the community and not to address mental health crisis. So, will we back away from what's proposed? I would say that we have held town hall meetings, we have talked to countless folks, we have looked at cutting things from the budget, in fact, there have been some minor changes, we've taken some small things. But we believe that one of the, you know, this is unique, because it's holistic, and we're going to, we believe that the voters are asking for. Now, I guess my final comment on that, Commissioner, is, we're not done. We have many more town halls, we have many more questions to answer for citizens, we have, you know, we're still working with A&amp;T to, what is that rate? You know, we talk about going at light speed, yeah, that's an understatement. I can tell you that there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes, and I will congratulate, and I would also like to thank, as Mr. Dingle did, that the managers in the various departments in the county have been fantastic. The collaboration between county, the citizens group, and I won't speak for the city, but I think, based on what I've seen with the city, has been fantastic. A lot of people are putting in an awful lot of work, we're not going to slow down. Now we need to put the pedal to the metal and really go. But our focus now needs to shift to answering questions, making sure that this continues to be a grassroots, citizens-led initiative, make sure that we hear from and we educate as many people as we can, with a recognition, commissioners, that we're not going to make everybody happy. We get that. But we are focused on providing, or at least getting this to a decision of those voters. Thanks.
Any further questions for the citizens group? Thanks, Steve. Rick and Ken, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think I'm fine.
Great, great. So, are there any other further questions about the actual order we're approving today and how that fits into the process? I understand that the city of Veneta is holding a town hall this evening, and they have action scheduled on the 14th at this time, so that they'll have the ability to take this order up hopefully on the 14th.
And the only thing I would need clarification from, Chair, is the suggestion of Commissioner Lichen, because, about the location, because currently, as the order reads, it has both hearings, literally, or it says, at Harris Hall on those dates at 10:00 a.m., so that would require a little change. It's no big deal, I just need to know if the board's doing it.
And I'll leave that up to the agenda team, and I'm not beholden either way, I'm just a suggestion.
Trying to see if we have where that is in the... I'm reading the order, looking for that.
Oh, it's paragraph 13, I apologize.
13, okay, sorry, it's on the wrong page. Do we have to put the location into it? Do we, can we say that?
No.
Just have it at a location to be determined on January 12th?
Yeah.
In the actual order?
I don't know what actually does have to say.
I'm looking.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
The statute does read that we have to publish and post notice of time and location of those meetings, so, you know, consider what we have in the order. Could say, "There shall be two public hearings," and just list the dates if you didn't want to be specific about the time.
And then we could just put the location in the notice.
In the notice, yes.
Yeah, I'm a little bit reluctant to press the, is it 840? Because I think the ORS does say we have to have the time and location, and it's about having it 30 days ahead, so if we don't have the time and location in this notice now, we might be violating that 30 days. And I, not having contacted the fire folks out there, or anyone that has a large enough hall to hold a hearing in the Veneta area, or, you know, like the middle school or something like that, it's, I think we're probably best to leave it in Harris Hall for now.
I believe that the huge sigh you hear is from Mr. Jones, not trying to look at the logistics, I'm trying to reschedule this, the meeting up to Veneta. Because those are both, I think, regular board days, so that would be the other issue.
Yeah, they're regular board dates, and it does, you know, the 840 does say time and location.
Okay.
So.
Okay. I knew we had to do the notice.
Commissioner Stewart? So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of order 15-12-08-03 in the matter of the formation of the Fern Ridge Community Policing District.
Second.
Has amended in paragraph seven?
Yes, has amended.
Second.
Commissioner Storson?
I wanted to ask Mr. Kyler a question about this. Alex, do you know anything about any polling that's been done about whether or not people within the district like the idea or don't like the idea? I feel like one of the things we're doing in this instance that we didn't do in the previous ones, and that is try to find out a little bit more about what the public, what their perspective is on this, separate from the issue of advocacy of whether we are for it as individuals, or whether the people that are forming the district are for it, but what's the attitude of the public?
Chairman Bozovic and Commissioner Storson, I think last week, the administrator sought some direction from the board regarding a community research survey. We got the affirmative nods from you to move forward with that. So concurrent to all this other work, we are working on getting a community survey into the field, and so you should have the benefit of that information by the time these public hearings occur, to give you, the board and the proponents, some additional information about, at least the findings of the survey and what the attitudes of the voters are inside the proposed district.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Kyler. So it's been moved and seconded, or is there any discussion to the motion? I'll just also spend a second to add my thanks, particularly to the citizens and the folks and staff and the city of Veneta, who've all worked hard to pull this together. I've been to several Veneta council work sessions and regular sessions so far, and I've been flying emails between staff and all that, trying to tie up details last second, and everybody's working really hard to get this moving ahead, so I really want to appreciate that. So with that, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll have that final order for you to sign at the exec session.
Thank you. So, moving forward, we're a little bit early for our 11 o'clock time certain, so we have commissioners' announcements. Jump up to 9A. Is there any announcements from commissioners? Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to report yesterday at the Housing Policy Board that, in fact, I was surprised because I had not heard this, but apparently last night, the Springfield City Council chose to vote to end their partnership and their agreement with the Housing Policy Board. And I think what you're going to see now is a conversation of just kind of reconstituting. And we're not going to have a meeting in January, we'll have one in February, but probably have a broader discussion. The reason why I bring this up because of the fact that it looks like maybe this short session, there may be an opportunity where there could be anywhere from $40 million to $60 million of additional dollars coming for affordable housing. And what I want to make sure is that the Housing Policy Board, what it really amounts to is not only discussion with the board itself, but many of the nonprofit agencies that are involved in developing affordable housing, low-income housing are there and they're at the table. And so, I was, like I said, I was actually surprised. I was not aware that there was going to be a vote by the council to actually end their joint, their longtime agreement with, as far as being a partner. At this point in time, we will come back in February. I strongly believe that there needs to be some sort of place in, or some sort of committee in place, at least making sure that we're working with our nonprofits, working with those that are involved in building affordable housing here locally, that they continue to have a place to dialogue. And I think when you have someone like John Van Landingham, who's a member of the, a longtime member of the Housing Policy Board, his not only connection with folks in Salem, but I think his longtime advocacy for affordable housing, to me, is very important. And so, I'm hopeful that as the conversation moves forward, that Lane County will continue to be engaged. While affordable housing isn't necessarily built in areas of Lane County, I think that our involvement, our leverage will continue to be important moving forward. And I was disappointed to the fact that Springfield's wanting to bat, to end their agreement with the Housing Policy Board. But, it is what it is and so I think what we need to do is continue to have, make sure we have the dialogue with our folks, in particular with HACSA, and then also continue to be engaged with the Affordable Housing Staff at the City of Eugene as well as the City of Springfield. I don't know where the staff is particular at the City of Springfield, but that seems to be where the elected officials are at this point in time. The other, as we all know, we did receive, it's been signed by the President, so there is a federal transportation package coming our way, the FAST Act. And so, big thanks to Congressman DeFazio and Senator Wyden, both involved in the conference committee, but DeFazio in particular was highly involved in actually writing the projects through. And tomorrow night, we'll have our Area Commission on Transportation talking about the STIP process. And there continues to be a lot of positive outlook, positive movement on territorial highway. And I actually look to see territorial highway moving forward finally after all this time. And we're getting strong support from ODOT, not just here locally, but actually the leadership in Region 2 and beyond is supporting our project. And I, that's very key, as well as the other projects, which includes the multi-use path, the Vanita path, we call it. There's a project in Florence that's gained a lot of momentum as well, as well as a couple other urban projects. But, just wanted to report on that and want to thank our staff folks, especially the National Association of Counties, were very engaged all through the process of the FAST Act. So, I think our dollars were well spent as far as our engagement and being a member of the National Committee, receiving those updates constantly and also having personal conversations with Congressman DeFazio in particular. It, very well done. So, things can get done in Washington DC after all in a bipartisan fashion. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks. Further announcements from commissioners? Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a quick report on Operation 365 Veterans. We had our final meeting of the Poverty and Homelessness Board Subcommittee on Veterans Housing. It's actually our final scheduled meeting. We will be meeting again in January. I'd like to report that we are on schedule to house all 365-plus veterans that we had set as a goal for this year. That will happen by the end of, by the end of January. We'll have a full report on that in, excuse me, by the end of December. We'll have a full report in January. We're also achieving what has been called functional zero, that is no new homeless veterans in the county, achieving an equilibrium with the veterans who are here and the veterans being housed. So, we've met, we will have met our goals by the end of the year. One of the rather lofty goals that the Poverty and Homelessness Board Subcommittee set that is being realized. Now, the other thing I'd like to mention regarding housing and homelessness, and we had a brief discussion earlier, Mr. Mokr Heiski, under your items, there's a lot to be said about it, but, you know, two weeks ago, on one of the coldest nights of the year, it was announced that the Egan Warming Centers would not be open due to a lack of volunteers. Now, the Egan Warming Center is a name for Major Tom Egan who died at the end of Blair Boulevard, froze to death one night, just a few hundred feet from where the mission operates. Major Egan had substance abuse issues, that's well documented, and therefore was not able to necessarily get into the mission based on the substance abuse issues. So, we're, we opened the, the Egan Warming Centers were open on the very coldest of nights in the year. Well, two weeks ago, during the coldest nights, they were not able to operate due to a lack of volunteers. So, we put out, they put out a plea and it was echoed by a number of people throughout the community. And we had two training sessions last week for volunteers. The two training sessions occurred on Wednesday and on Saturday. I attended both of them and I'd like to report that over 700 people volunteered for training during those two sessions. It was the teeming out the door, including a number of people, including people from the Police Department, including people from the Sheriff's Department. Jacob Fox, for instance, was there. And a lot of people on a broad base throughout the community responded to the call for volunteers at the Egan Warming Centers. Egan Warming Centers right now are looking for additional places. And I know that, Mr. Mokr Heiski, you've been in discussion with St. Vincent de Paul and with the operators of the Egan Warming Centers regarding finding new places to actually open warming centers on the coldest of nights. How we address the not-so-cold nights, just the very wet nights, which are equally dangerous, equally life-threatening, that's another discussion that is underway. But regarding the Egan Warming Centers, as far as volunteers are concerned, the call for additional volunteers to be trained was met and I was very impressed with the number of people who turned up.
Thank you. Any other announcements? If not, I think we're close enough to 11 o'clock to move to, back to item 8A, which is a report back on the 2015 Land Management Division Fee Study. And we have Kier Miller, our senior planner, here. And Kier, I'll let you introduce your guest.
Thank you, Chair Bozovic, and good morning, commissioners. For the record, my name is Kier Miller. I'm the interim planning program supervisor in the Land Management Division. And with me this morning is Peter Moy. Peter is a principal with FCS Consulting Group. We're here this morning to discuss with the board the results of a recently conducted Land Management Division Fee Study, which FCS conducted. And a little bit about Peter and his company. The FCS Group was selected through a competitive RFP process consistent with the lane manual and state law to conduct the division's fee study. They have a proven track record regionally and also locally, and they've worked on dozens of user fee studies for jurisdictions. They've most recently conducted the county's utility feasibility study as well as our parks' SDC charge study. So, I'm going to give you just a little bit of background on why we're here today and what this study is all about. And then Peter will actually walk you through the study and the results of the fee analysis. So, as the board is aware, the Land Management Division operates on an enterprise funding model. We receive, or were supported primarily through user fees assessed to our building, sanitation, and planning permits. And the last systematic review of our fees, our fee schedule was in 2007, so coming up on a decade. In 2004, as the division began to see a strong resurgence in the local development and construction sectors, the previous division manager began drafting a restaffing plan to make sure we had staff on hand following the Great Recession to be able to meet that demand in construction and development that we were starting to see. And as part of that effort, the division did meet with the board on several occasions and also met with Mr. Mokr Heiski to talk about our future staffing. And at that time, the county administrator directed the division to do two things. The first was to undertake a process improvement initiative to make sure we were working as effectively and as efficiently as possible with the resources we had on hand. And though, not really the subject of today's meeting, I will just give you a brief update on that. At this point, we are nearly complete with that effort. The planning program has completed its process improvement. It established a series of recommendations which we're now implementing. Concurrent with that, the building program began going through its process improvement effort, and I understand they're about halfway through with that effort. We've had some staff changes, as the board is aware. There's a new division manager, Lydia McKinney, just came on board. We have a relatively new building official, Steve McGuire, from the City of Eugene. So, those two, as that process is completed in the building program, the thought is the two work groups will come together and we'll figure out the most effective ways to work interdepartmentally or interprogram, in an interprogram method to make sure we're, you know, as efficient and as effective as possible. The second thing Mr. Mokr Heiski directed staff to undertake was a comprehensive user fee study, which is the subject of today's meeting. And that was to just determine if, you know, how we stack up with our local comparable jurisdictions in terms of our fees and also determine if we are meeting our goal of full cost recovery. So, today, we're not asking for direction from the board. This, the purpose of today's hearing is really just to set a fact base so you can understand where we're coming from and that we've done the necessary research. The division does plan to come back in the early part of next year with some potential adjustments to our fee schedule. At this time, both the new division manager and the new building official are coming up to speed on the fee situation in the, in the division. We thought it'd be premature to actually recommend fees at this point, but we will be coming back shortly after the first of the year to discuss the fees with you. But, again, today's presentation is merely a report back to the board and to sort of show you the methodology and findings out of our fee study. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter. Peter has about 10, 15 minutes worth of information for you and then I'll have time for questions at the end. And there were a couple of small changes to the PowerPoint presentation you're about to see, so I'll pass out a revised package.
Thank you, Kier. Today, we're going to talk about a few things. The fee methodology, sort of what potential new fees or at least potential new ideas about fees and services that were provided without, that were actually being given away or provided for free. And then we'll talk a little bit about, and we use, the 2014 cost of service and results in the budget and workload. You'll have to pardon me for my voice, I'm sort of still fighting something. It's been going around. And then we have the fee comparisons and then we'll just talk a little bit about fund management. So, our major processes, as we go through the technical analysis, we really go through a process where we try and collect all the data. And we go through a list and we work with the department and the management to identify what is a fee service as well as what is a non-fee service. And then what we usually do is try and get some time estimates. Well, in the case of the Management Division, Land Management Division, they already have and keep track of their time. So, we had time records and what we did is for every employee during this period of FY14, we looked at where people spent their time, where they recorded it. And then, based on that, we also start building these cost layers. We also take, again, the non-labor cost and add also the overhead cost. And so, we build what we call these cost layers. And so, we know what does it cost in terms of providing direct services. That's actually somebody spending time working on a permit or working on a long-range plan or something else like that. Indirect services usually are customer service kinds of things, administration, you know, staff meetings, those kinds of things, training as well. And then there's department overhead as well as the countywide overhead. With those things, we then put together a process where we then identify what the full cost of all the building services fees are, incurrent planning, as well as the sanitation fees that we looked at. And once we have those full costs put together, then it's more, really more of a policy decision. And one of the things that we wanted to look at was what was the cost recovery level? And we'll go through that for each sort of group and you'll be able to see where we stand. And you can do it by program level, fee category, the individual fee, and even do it by cost layer. So, but basically, as part of our report, we put it together and we show it really by overall program level and then we show it really by individual fee. We went through a process with holding groups, focus groups with the staff and saying, who's involved with a permit and how long does it take you to process that permit? And what we try and do is strive for hitting the, sort of the 80th to 90th percentile of time. So, you know, we know that there are ones that take a little bit less time and we know there's ones that take sometimes lots of extra time. But, those are usually the, you know, the ones, the cases that are, you know, on the far ends of the spectrum. So, what we really want to try and do again is make sure that the fee and the time that we spend when we calculate it covers, you know, 80 to 95% of all the permits that come in. So, and then basically, once we decide where do you want to be in terms of that particular cost recovery level, then they'll set the fees. And this is something that the division is going to be going through later on. As we went through that process, we identified a number of different types of services that really didn't have a fee for them, even though they were providing them. And so, these are just a quick list of them. Change of occupants, extension, permit extensions, permit reinstatements, electrical for in-ground swimming pools that were indoor spas. So, that seemed like that was happening quite a bit. And so, we identified how much time and effort does it take to do that? For planning, there's, you can see that there's a number of other different types of fees that were, and services that were provided. Then again, no fee was being charged and so, we had to figure out a fee. And so, we went through the process and identified what this cost, and same with sanitary services. So, let's just talk about building. Again, these are our cost layers. Basically, I'm not sure if you can read that, but, you know, 64% of the effort and the cost is really going into the direct services. As you can see, there's a number of other indirect services from when we talk about the front counter services, public information, the training, this general admin, the software support, the file maintenance, all those things sort of are indirectly supporting all those direct services, as well as a portion or a share of the department as well as countywide overhead. And that was about $1.2 million, $1 million even in terms of the cost that was being. So, when we look at the cost recovery level, we're actually doing pretty well. You can see the costs are just over $1 million and the total revenue that came in for that particular year, FY 2013-14, was about 100%. Now, one of the things in building that we weren't, we didn't show here and we didn't do that analysis, but of those revenues that come in, many of those are carried forward into the next year because you usually submit a, get a permit and then you pay the fee and then you do the inspections. Well, if you did that on the very last day or you did it, you know, this time of year, you know, you're not likely to have everything done by the end of the year. So, there's something that we call sort of this deferred revenue or a sort of a deferred liability that still has to be taken care of. So, if all the buildings, constructions stop, except for those permits that we already had had in had had in hand, we would still have some sort of payment that they paid us to complete their projects. But anyway, building goes pretty good. And in all the surveys and all the building fees that we've been doing in this last year or so, that's pretty standard. In many cases, they're actually making a little bit more money because they haven't caught up to the speed of the economic upturn in terms of the construction. We also did a separate one for electrical. One of the things about electrical is there's really only one person, and then the county contracts with somebody else to help with the overload. And again, the total was about $230,000. In terms of its cost effectiveness and cost recovery, it's about 93% based on what we identified. And so the fund is, the LMD fund is contributing about $17,000 to help offset that differential. And as you can see, you know, it is covering its direct cost. It is recovering department overhead as well as the indirect, but it's not quite covering, say, all the countywide overhead. So for current planning, there's about $870,000 that was being spent. Again, there's a lot more time spent in the indirect where people are being helped in terms of public assistance and the front counter services, also a lot of more general administration. So only like 46% is in terms of that direct service, 42 is sort of the indirect, and 8% of that is the overhead cost. So out of this 807, what we see is that again, it's not quite recovering, it's about 87% cost recovery. And again, when you look sort of at the graph, we are getting back most of the direct, all the direct costs and, you know, pretty much close to all of the indirect costs. Again, it's the overhead portions that we don't quite seem to be recovering in these, in these two areas. Sanitation, very similar, they have a very high rate of, in terms of direct cost and direct service, at 72%. The overall amount is about $300,000. And again, you can see the different mix in terms of the services and the amount of time they spend. In terms of their cost recovery, they're actually recovering quite a bit more, about 126%. And again, you know, this would also apply as well as the building and some of the current planning is, again, some of these fees are going to end up being carried over because the whole process and approval process may, may not be complete at the end of the year or at the end of the fiscal year when, when they reported the revenue. And again, again, you can see that it's doing pretty well. You also have a very separate, a separate fee which is used to recover all the administrative services. So that's like a, I'm not sure, is that a 3%, 10%? I can't remember what the current fee is. Yeah, 3% or something. So then on top of that, that's supposed to cover all the LMD administrative services that support these fee services. And as you can see, that we're only getting about half that cost back in terms of the cost recovery. In other places, sometimes the time spent by some of these people are actually included as part of the overhead in, in the individual grouping. So like current planning would have a share of this. In other places, when we do work, but since the way you, the county does, that they have a separate fee or sort of percentage that they charge on top to help support this. And so that's why we did it a little bit separately. So any questions about cost recovery or the cost of service? Okay. We did some fee comparisons. We identified actually four jurisdictions, Clackamas County, Douglas County, Eugene, Springfield. And then we also used, at the time that we were doing this, the Oregon Building Officials' Association had a survey, and we used and compiled some of the data for you to look at here. So how does, in terms of housing construction, how does the county look next to Eugene, Springfield, and Clackamas and Douglas counties? As you can see, you're pretty much either in the middle or the lowest one, in terms of the new single-family home, in terms of single-family addition, as well as a new multifamily unit. Relative to the other counties, you're probably the highest one in terms of the counties, but certainly in terms of Eugene and Springfield, you're, you're a little bit lower than they are.
I was going to ask a question about that.
Sure.
So when you're comparing us to Eugene and Springfield, and you're talking about the costs, are we also comparing the number of staff that also work and the processes that they go through? Are they?
No, we're just looking at the fees. So this is what their, what their fees are relative to what your fee is. Whether they choose to subsidize it more or less, we don't know.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, if we're trying to set our fees based on what it costs us to do things, and you're telling us that our fees are lower than Eugene and Springfield, we're the lowest, I want to make sure that our processes that we go through and the time that it takes to do things are, you know, like comparable, because they may not be.
Right. And, you know, that's one of the things about doing these kinds of comparisons. Again, we just said, if I had to pay, regardless of what the process was, you know, it would be, this is what I would end up paying. On building, it's a little bit easier because most of the building processes are very similar, and the codes are very similar. So, and the way that generally most building quote departments operate is everything is based on sort of a construction value, and then they have these fee schedules that they do that. So, and this was done, again, we're just taking the data off the Oregon Building Association's survey, so.
All right.
With planning, it's a little bit different. In terms of commercial construction, you can see again, you know, you're sort of either on the bottom or in the middle depending on what type of it is, but this is for a new commercial office building. And, and we only took the structural plan check and the building permit. So they had a few other miscellaneous fees and things included in that. But these are really the primary fees whenever you're doing a building project that you're going to end up paying is the building permit as well as the plan review, plan check fee.
Just to be clear, this does not include system development charges?
This does not. This is just, just building, get my building permit, build my house, build my office building, make my tenant improvement. And for most part, this is, what we also did is we had, they had about 50 some odd cities and a few counties that were involved in the survey. So one of the things we did is we said, well, you know, if you took overall for the whole state where they, where they did this, you know, where does Lane County's general fees fall? And again, we, what you, where we find out for most of the fees that when we look at what your fee was for that particular project, what we find is that you're somewhere in, at the top end of the 50% quartile or sort of the bottom end of the 75th. So somewhere probably between 52 and, you know, 50 is where you are. So you're right sort of in the middle relative to all the different fees that were collected in this particular survey. For planning, it's a little bit different. And the one thing about planning fees is that oftentimes, that's where there really is a big difference. And because everybody has a different set of definitions, and also the code could be considerably different. We've been to places that have, you know, a planning development code that's maybe about an inch thick, and we've been to places that have, you know, three or four binders full of code. And so that also impacts some of the cost if you're doing it based on cost of service. So, and it's hard to sometimes say, is this the exact same fee as, or exact same process? And that's where land use gets a little bit more difficult to do the comparisons compared to the buildings. But when we looked at, at least for Eugene and Springfield, of the 11 comparable fees, you know, six of the county's fees were lowest and three were in between the two cities. For the cost recovery fees, which is based on what we did and said, here's the cost of service, only four were in the lowest and four were in between instead of the other way we had it before. Compared to the two counties, Clackamas and Douglas, you're mostly higher than those other counties. Two-thirds of the 15 fees that we compared were higher for both the current fees as well as our cost recovery fees.
So a quick question before we move off to the other counties. Do you know how much general fund those counties provide their, their planning and building departments to subsidize fees?
I do not, no.
Yeah, because I think, I think in the case of both those counties, they actually provide general fund into their building departments.
Chair Bozovic, I believe you're correct. I think in, in looking at some of this, we, we have, separate from this, the former planning director had reached out to a number of our comparable counties and asked for a set of fees from them that, that aren't reflected in this study, but that data is a year or two old. But it, as part of that, I do recall we looked at what the general fund allocation was. And I know for a fact, I believe Clackamas County is about 50% funded through general fund support. I can't say as far as Douglas County, but they do receive some general fund support.
And in fact, in, in general, when, again, when we do planning fees, most, whether it's cities and even some counties, you're, you're one of the few that have a very high cost recovery rate. When we come in and do many of these types of fees, we find that the cities certainly are, they're down to like 15, 20% cost recovery. And so that's one of the, you know, things when we start to look at these, and it just sort of gives you an idea, well, maybe we should look at that. But just in general, our experience shows that when we're talking planning fees, you know, they hardly ever recover barely above 50% of their cost, and you're doing pretty well relative to everybody else in terms of that. But that's your policy too.
Yeah.
So.
Commissioner Stewart?
Quick question in regards to the planning fees. I know that this last year, we made a conscious choice and came up with resources to take care of, like, planning for comprehensive plans. Is that a completely different subject than what we're talking about here?
That's correct. So right now, we're only reviewing current planning fees. So those fees charge up private citizens for planning applications, land use applications. Fees for long-range planning services are, we generally, we take a, they are reflected in this to some extent that there is a surcharge assessed to those building permits, but those funds come from other places as well besides. It's only a small percentage of the funding comes from the surcharge on current planning fees. So this analysis focuses on current planning, the long-range work that you reference. We have a number of different sources of funding for that, including tipping fees, for example.
Right, okay. And that also goes for code enforcement. So code enforcement costs are not built into any of these fees. Code enforcement generally is sort of considered to be separate. And again, some of that's been funded by, I think, solid waste funds as well as other, other funds too. On the sanitation side, you know, about half the county's current fees as well as the cost recovery were, you know, in between the other two county fees. So on the sanitation side, you're actually doing, you know, you're within, somewhere in the middle. And there are a couple that, you know, you might be higher and some other things like that in terms of commercial site evaluation and a few other ones were. But for the most part, most of the fees were, were in between the two county fees. The last thing I wanted to talk about was just a little bit about fund management. And we already talked a little bit about, you know, one of the things that you have is, is that when, in all of these cases, oftentimes the construction lags behind when they, when they pay the permit. So what happens is we pay the permit first, we pay that, and then the work goes on. And so that's one of the things that we try and track sometimes in terms of those cost recovery areas is to identify how much of that money is actually for deferred, what we call that deferred liability for projects that are still ongoing, but they go into the next fiscal year, just to get an idea of where we are with that. Over time, if the, the process is sort of, and the permits come in sort of consistently, you know, then you'll always sort of have a certain amount of that. But there is an amount of that, and, and then if your backlog gets too big, there's oftentimes, the question is if it's, if it becomes too big, is that because we're not, we don't have enough staff to process the permits or there's something else that's causing that because we've got too much business? And then usually something.
Commissioner Stewart?
I just wanted to ask a quick question about the ratio of the cost recovery as opposed to general public taxpayer dollars going into the, to the, offset the costs. And you mentioned, and we've seen this over time, that some of our city partners are low maybe in what you described as 15% range, and we're high in the almost exactly opposite, Is that, is that city versus county in general? Or is that we're just an outlier and we just have a low amount of, of revenue going in to that effort and we're trying to make up for the whole thing or most of it by, by putting it on the applicant?
Well, I can, I can just say for, for building and other types of develop, most places are, regardless whether it's county or city, are really close to 100%. That's what they try and do, and their, their cost recovery is very high. On planning, it does vary. For most of the times on cities, we do see cities being much lower on the cost recovery side. But I have a few county clients too where they're, they're real low on their side. But I also have one that's probably another, very close to where you are because they're in a separate fund and they have to recover their costs. And so that's really how it's structured. If you're structured as part of the general fund, oftentimes as planning departments are, then there's less of that. When they say, here's a separate fund and it's just you, building and, and planning, current planning, and maybe some long-range planning, which is usually funded by general fund, then that has to go up because they've enforced, because it's of the way the.
There's no real industry standard here. It's really up to what the local government has and what the local government's willing to put into it.
Yeah, and there's a couple of things too. On the planning side, there's some people, and we, when we talk about this, there are some benefits to that regulation, whereas when you build a house or something like that, it's, the regulation is there, the total benefit of that particular regulation goes to that homeowner. There are some public benefits. Whereas on the planning side, oftentimes you're regulating something and you're saying, well, to protect overall public safety, we're going to have you mitigate something. Say, we're going to have you put in a stoplight, we're going to have you do something else, we're going to have you put more open space or something like that. And so there is sometimes this, a concept that, well, there's some public benefit to that, so maybe the developer or whoever's doing that shouldn't pay the full cost of that because through our regulations, we're, we're making it so they're consistent with, you know, the way our community wants it. But go ahead, Kier.
Sure. No, I think that's a great explanation, but if I could just add on a little bit, Commissioner Stewart, and I think from the building standpoint, it's, it's an effective model to, to charge fees and get full cost recovery from the building permit standpoint. It's much more difficult from the land use because as Peter was indicating, there's a lot more sort of nebulous values at play there. I know that we are definitely an anomaly on the land use side of things when we look at not receiving a general fund. I believe the majority, if not all, counties in Oregon receive some percentage of general fund to subsidize their planning programs. Although we do have other sources, for example, Waste Management, as I mentioned, that does to some extent subsidize. But I think to answer your question, on the planning side, we're definitely an anomaly with not receiving general fund for those services.
So, any other questions on that particular item?
Commissioner Stewart? Thank you. Not a question so much. You, you say that in comparison with other cities, we're more interested, of course, in the local large cities, Eugene and Springfield.
Sure.
It doesn't matter what Oregon City is doing. Because when people are building in Lane County versus, versus the city, they're comparing, you know, what, what is happening locally. So I'm more interested in hearing what Eugene is doing in particular than, than, you know, what some of the other cities that you've, that you've surveyed.
Right, and we didn't do Eugene. We did Springfield's planning fees a lot, a long time ago. I'd have to check to see, go back to see what their cost recovery ratio was. Again, for the most part, generally we find that if they're a part of the general fund and part of, they're not a separate fund like you have for LMD, they're not going to be as high cost recovery as. to be as high cost recovery as usual. Now, their fees may be very, also different too because oftentimes, you know, you have this mix of rural as well as some of the urban areas. True. That the regulation is a lot different, you know, and that's, again, those are.
It's very complex.
Yeah.
Especially in an area like the Upper Willamette Valley where you have urban and rural interface, it includes a lot of buildup area that's not urban, that's not a part of a metropolitan, a part of a city.
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Mokrheisi, one thing I'm going to point out however, is that we're talking about cost recoveries and we're talking about fees. And what this all means is increasing or looking at the cost of how much does it, how much does it cost to get into a home in Lane County? You know, how much does it cost somebody who doesn't have a home to get into a home? Whether it's my son moving here from Tucson, Arizona, or whether it's somebody who's just graduated from South Eugene High School getting into a home. And as we look at fees, we can't really do it in a vacuum in terms of all of the other things it costs to just, to build a home. Building a new home affects the cost of how much you pay for a rental also. Now, there are people who dispute that, but the fact is, you know, if the cost of new housing is up, then the market rate for rentals also goes up at the same time. Nothing in specific toward your presentation today because this is a lot of complex work. And to most people who look at this, their eyes glaze over, but to most people who look at how much does it cost me to get into a home, their eyes don't glaze over. They only glaze over when it comes down to the point that I cannot afford the home, my son cannot afford the home that we're building in here in Lane County or inside one of the cities. Commissioner Bozovich asked about SDCs, for instance. SDCs are a pretty significant cost of how much does it cost to get into a home in Lane County? So, it's, everything has to be looked at together. And as we move forward with our fee structure and our cost recovery rate as it compares to other counties and as it compares to other jurisdictions, bearing in mind that our cost recovery rate, the closer we get to 100% cost recovery on it, while it's fair for the rest of the people who aren't actually buying the home, the closer we get to 100% cost recovery, the higher the price of the house. And every $1,000 you add to the price of a house, a certain number of people are no longer going to be able to buy a house. So, we have to take that into account and we have to be very judicious about how we increase the cost of housing, both outside of the city limits and inside the city limits. So, that's a larger discussion, but it is something that we can't, we can't look at fees as just fees because as you add from in one area, every single thing adds to the cost of getting into a home.
Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On, Chair, so on the planning side, I mean, we don't necessarily need to have some sort of cost recovery because of all the grants that are available. So, it seems to me that whether there's a transportation management grant or some sort of grant available, whether cities, I know cities really contract out for grants, especially when they do planning work. County, does Lane County do something similar so that that's not necessarily the cost recovery? And I'm going to look to maybe Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Sorenson, and, because I don't know the history of, so has Lane County always been in this position where it's been, where land management has been driven by just cost recovery and fee generation only? Or when did that, when did that begin to take place, I guess? And, Chair, if you can ask that as well?
Yeah.
And, so that's my, on the, then I, also after that, I'll have a question on a couple of specific fees as well, so I'll leave.
Sure. So, the Land Management Division in the early 2000, early 2000s, I believe, 2002, switched from our fund, which was a part of the general fund, to an enterprise model. So, it was around 2002 that we started looking at cost recovery and as you'll recall, that sort of coincided with the housing market bubble that was growing. So, it worked well for a while until it didn't. And so, now we're in this, this situation where, you know, the discussion needs to come up again. And as I said, we haven't really reviewed our fees since 2007, since that time. So, there's been a lot of discussion internally on whether or not these fee increases every, you know, eight, 10 years is a good thing. I know there's some discussion about maybe tying it to the Consumer Price Index. I know that a lot of the contractors out there would prefer to see sort of a steady growth and kind of predict and build into their costs unknown fee increases opposed to like a large jump in fees. So, that's what I'll say about that. In regards to your comment about grants, I can tell you that the division is very competitive about trying to go after grant funding, although grants are very difficult to come by for planning work. I'm not sure about on the transportation side, but on the general typical long-range land use planning grants, we were just applied for and were not successful in getting a grant for our code rewrite project. So, we do go after aggressively, try to get grants and outside funding for services. So, I can't say that it plays a lot into our budget. It's usually each year maybe $50,000, we'll get a technical assistance grant from the state, but there's just not a lot of funding out there for long-range planning services especially.
So, a question on specific fees. So, I saw under new, if you can maybe explain what's a winery license? Because I saw that was under potential new, new fees and if there's a potential clash with OLCC.
A potential clash with OLCC?
Yeah. If you're going to, if we're looking at a winery license, what does that mean? And considering winery, you know, this is alcohol, so it's going to come under Oregon OLCC. So, I don't know if there's a clash there or not, but what would be, what's classified as a winery license?
Sure. So, in the last couple of years, the state has actually changed the statutes and how wineries are governed under the land use code. So, this fee, which as it's envisioned, we don't currently have it on the fee schedule, it would capture that new revised process for how we evaluate through the land use code.
So, this is just under land use?
Correct.
And this is basically after the King, King of States decision?
Exactly.
Oh, okay, perfect. And then one last question. I don't know if this would fall under fee, it's potential, but the, what you, I think what you're seeing now is the younger generation of builders, they're not coming in with, you know, lots of, you know, lots of paper and this type of thing. They're coming in with iPads and tablets. And so, my question is, are we in a position technology-wise to accommodate those very builders that are coming into Lane County with, instead of, you know, rolls of plans, it's all within, on an iPad or a tablet?
Yeah. I can tell you that the division has made excellent strides in moving towards e-commerce and we've done a lot of work to digitize all of our resources. In terms of full electronic plan review, we're not there yet. And that's certainly something that I know the new building official is interested in and looking at, but that is sort of a game changer when you're no longer accepting those paper documents over the counter. There is work to be done on that front and I'm sure future discussions on that, but I would say that we've gone a long way in having the resources available, all of our documents and background information, property files, et cetera, so that new generation of developers and builders can access that stuff, but we just aren't there yet with the plan review.
I'm strongly interested in that approach as well. I have several friends, especially on the commercial side, more on the residential side, that are clearly have gone to paperless and it seems to be more accommodating, at least from their perspective. And with our new land management manager in the room as well, I know that I would be very interested is, and I don't know what kind of cost is involved in there, but it seems to be working with IT or IS, I guess here at the Lane County, is something that that's a potential approach. That's just my thought on that. But appreciate the, appreciate the work, very comprehensive. I would also agree, I think, to kind of be careful with comparisons. There becomes a tipping point in certain areas and I know that we have a couple of city here locally that's getting close to West Lynn fee amounts and it's, and I believe they've gone over that tipping point. West Lynn, I think you can, let's face it, that's a city where they build very large homes and can accommodate pretty insignificant fees. There's a city here in Lane County that I think has approached that number and their permits unfortunately have begun to fall off and are not accommodating. So, but I appreciate that. And also from a policy standpoint, I mean, I would be interested at least eventually on this discussion about whether we look at potentially, looking at general fund to maybe offset some of that in the future. That's a conversation we can have, hopefully the board will have down the line. So, thanks for the good work.
Thank you. So, just a couple of quick notes. I presume you're going to be coming back with a recommendation later. This is just kind of a primer for us. As I look down the detailed report that was included in the board materials, we have specific items that are actually more than 100% recovery and there's some that are, you know, less. And I guess my, my guess is it will always be about raising a fee. It might actually be about lowering a fee also, so it's not all unidirectional. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
Yes, and on the other hand too, it's really, you've got to look at the volume. So, if there's fees that are low, but that's a high-volume kind of permit, then those are the ones you want to get more cost recovery. If it's not, doesn't happen very often, then, you know, if you're not recovering the cost, you're not losing a lot of money or you're not gaining a lot of money either. So, that's the other thing too.
Yeah, I can't remember the one I saw on there that was over 1,000% recovery, so I'm assuming we might want to lower that one a little.
Yeah, and it might have been a very low dollar amount and some of them are on the old building fee schedules and some other stuff.
And I will note, you know, for Commissioner Farr, that the city of Florence has a policy of only recovering 60%. And it's kind of, and it's basically a council policy that they choose not to recover and subsidize their construction, development industries from general fund because they feel it's a service, you know, for the community to keep those permits low and it's also economic stimulus to the city. So, they actually have, they've made a policy choice to subsidize both building and planning actions. They don't expect their building and planning department to recover any more than 60% of their cost with their fees. So, it's, you know, so we might look statewide at some of that, that one survey did go statewide, but you can look locally here and see examples of policy decisions to not recover for specific reasons. So, any further questions from the board? So, I guess we'll be seeing you soon.
Early next year, I anticipate so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, with that, I'm going to hold agenda team request and work session request till the end of the meeting today because we may generate some in our afternoon items. I'd like to move into executive session if we can and maybe deal with that before we break for lunch here and then we'll recess out of executive session and come back this afternoon in the regular session. So, the Board of County Commissioners will meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions and to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regards to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 1926602 ENH, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purposes listed above. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of this session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in executive session and we will be coming back into public session after our lunch break at 1:30. So, with that, I am going to recess us and we'll reconvene in the Board of Commissioners conference in a couple of minutes.